This work session called to order. Roll call, please.
Paul Kaufman.
Here.
Susan Edmondson.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Here.
Ashley Jones.
Here.
Bill Lowe.
Here.
Billy King.
Here.
Kim York.
Here.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you guys. Thank you guys. All right, our main discussion tonight is on the budget planning and I will turn it over to Dr. Monsis.
All right, good evening, everybody. This is March and it's traditionally our time to do preliminary budget discussion and so we've had some discussions throughout the course of the school year related to budget and Cindy has done a good job of preparing quite a bit of information. She'll go over a little bit of a timeline and context for you and then we're going to kind of share duties explaining some of the pieces here that we've got in the packet. And we did add a couple of items and reorganize some things yesterday, so in case you looked at it prior to that point in time, it may be just slightly adjusted, but the overall numbers are the same, it's just how we kind of organize some of the information. So, we're going to share quite a bit of content tonight and there's a lot of numbers involved with it. Don't hesitate to ask questions as we go along, but as we get towards the end of the discussion, we're going to want to help get some framework parameters from you as a board as we move forward in our planning, both from a staffing perspective and then compensation for staff and then some of the other programs and supplies and purchase services that we want to consider for next year. So overall, we're going to end up focusing on kind of that new expenditure priorities in terms of what we want to do with additional resources that we have available. That's kind of where we're going to end up, so I just kind of want to start with the end in mind as we take off. So with that, I'll turn it over to Cindy and she'll start walking you through some of the information.
Okay, thank you for coming tonight and discussing this budget. We have a new item on the front that I've never included in the work session before and that is a preview of the budget book cover photo. It's one of the most fun things that I get to do in putting the budget together, get my head out of the spreadsheets and do something a little creative. My goal since I've been here has been to find a photo that shows best how we use our resources to carry out our mission. And this year, I found a picture of a project that Emily Foff organized for her first grade class and for the high school art classes. On the back, you'll see a description of the project they were working on where the first graders drew, planned and drew pictures of monsters, sent those to the high school, the high school art students turned them either into stuffed animals or sculptures and then they took those projects back over to the first graders, they traded projects and they got to talk about their projects and have this picture. I just really think it ties in with our strategic plan because it's hands-on learning, it was an expanded opportunity in the arts, it promoted development of soft skills such as communication, collaboration and creativity. I mean, can you imagine if, when you were in the first grade, if the high school kids came over and had done something with one of your drawings? I just really thought it was a great, great project. Okay, the next page is our budget development calendar and as Dr. Monsis said, we are on target with our March preliminary budget work session. You'll get to see how all of these other actions worked up to this point as we go through the documents tonight. Then in April, we'll bring you the final Team RPEC recommendations, we start actually crunching the numbers in the general ledger budget lines and we'll come back in, at the June Board Retreat with a draft budget where you'll get a chance to ask any additional questions, we make final tweaks and the budget will be approved at the June regular Board meeting. So the next schedule shows a revenue summary for just our operating funds, this doesn't include our debt service or capital projects. First column is showing our fiscal year 18 actual, this year's budget as it's been revised to date and then that next column is the projected revenues for fiscal year 20 and it shows the percent change from this year to next year. The biggest component of our local revenues is of course the property taxes and in order to develop this estimate, we meet with the assessor to get whatever information he can share with us so we can project that. This is a reassessment year and we think that we might see an increase in our assessed value of as high as 15%. But when I, we set our tax rate, we're going to be held to that consumer pricing index increase again, if you remember a couple of years ago when it was a reassessment year and we might actually have to roll back our tax rate to not exceed that. But we expect a good amount of new construction and so we think we'll still get a pretty good boost from that and we think that the 5.1% increase we projected is pretty safe and we might get lucky and get a little more than that. Proposition C, sales tax is distributed by the state based on our enrollment, so we have projected an increase there. And then if you skip down to state formula revenue, that's based on our projected enrollment and the projected state adequacy target, which is dependent on the state budget every year, but that's been, was fully funded last year, we expect that it will be this year and next year as well. Enrollment that works into that estimate is estimated to increase 100 students next year, which might be a little bit conservative based on what we're seeing this year, but we think that's a safe estimate to begin with. So those three lines of revenue make up 61.6 million, which is nearly 84% of our operating budget. All of the federal lines and most of the remaining state lines are reimbursements of, you know, based on what we've spent in the prior year, so we're using this year's budget to estimate those.
Quick question?
Sure.
We had a couple of big jumps in special ed stuff, is that just higher enrollment of special ed students?
We have, on the IDEA money, there's a big timing factor in that as well, where you can see that fiscal year 18 actual was 1.2 million, that had a large amount from the year before. We might see that same sort of timing roll over in these next two years, but we haven't projected for that. Where we see the increase is in some of these smaller lines, it just depends on what our population is at the time.
So that early childhood special ed, we had a higher?
Early childhood special ed, yes, we are projecting an increase in enrollment for that.
Because of the new space, having more room?
Partially though, that's just eligible students have increased, they're in the special education program and it's a common, that program's a combination of state and federal money, so sometimes that blend adjusts a little bit between state and federal.
Okay, are there any other questions on the revenue summary? Kim and Billy, are you hearing me all right? I should have asked that earlier.
Oh, yes, I am, thank you.
I'm hearing you fine.
Okay. Okay, so the next item in the packet is the budget plan recap. This is a spreadsheet that our district has used since Kerry's been here and it shows, starts out with 1718, which is our last actual numbers that we have, then we have our current year-to-date numbers, again adjusted by our budget amendments to date, and then it shows the projected year and three years past that. This is really the setup that wins us the meritorious budget award where we can, we show that as we're budgeting, we're looking on into the future and making sure that we can afford any changes that we're implementing this year, we can sustain on into the future. And Dr. Monsis is going to go over some of the items in this spreadsheet for you.
All right, as Cindy said, this is, this is what I use for my comfort zone to understand what our budget decisions are doing long-term. I inherited something similar to this 16 years ago when I had my first finance job in Warrensburg and so have been working with a tool like this and basically Cindy and I start working on this in the fall, we pass it back and forth, each one of us works on different parts of it at different times and we keep drafting and redrafting until we get to here and it will change again between now and June, but it's got built into it most of the assumptions we're talking about tonight. So when I kind of walk you through this a little bit, we're only going to look at the top page of it, the front page is a summary of everything that's behind it. So, as Cindy mentioned, 1718 is in the first column, you'll see towards the bottom of that, that we used quite a bit of reserves that year and that was to finish up all the construction projects related to our redistricting and reboundering process. This year in 1819, the totals at the bottom would indicate that we're adding to balances by almost 1.5 million. That is up slightly from the most recent budget adjustment you would have seen back in the fall. Cindy has prepared another updated budget adjustment that you'll see in the financial report at the March regular meeting here in a week and a half and so it'll be reflective of what these numbers are for 1819. And mostly the biggest change there is in local property taxes, our AV went up more this year with new construction and growth than what we had anticipated, so that's driving a good portion of that increase. So, it has, 1819 is an accurate starting point then, or at least as best we can tell at this point in the budget year. And that's important because when you start looking into projecting forward, you need to have a good starting baseline. So if we move to that green column, the 1920 column, that's-
Kim has a question.
Yes, go ahead.
On the projected reserve increase, is part of that because we were holding off on spending some of the increase as we made future decisions?
That is correct. We didn't invest all of the, all the new additional revenues at one time, we needed to heal up a little bit on our reserves to make sure we're in good cash flow position and at the same time, as a reminder, we have a target to be between 18 and 22% on reserves and we're projecting right now to be about 18 and a half or a little better for this year. In reality, it might be a little better than that even by the time we get to the end of the year. But you're correct and we're, we kind of held back on spending all that at once so we can do some additional planning because April was kind of a late decision point to make all the decisions that would need to be made related to investing those monies. Does that, does that answer your question? Kim?
Yeah, thank you.
So, some of the major decision points or some of the major variables are kind of towards the top of that document, assessed value, as Cindy mentioned, we're projecting around a 5% increase there with a tax levy being the same in our assumptions. If it's more than that 5%, there's a good chance we'd have to roll back our levy, but the net effect in total dollars would be the same. That's kind of how that interplay works. Then we've got some assumptions there in terms of salary increases for staff of about 5.5%. That would be something close to an average based on the assumptions we're going to share with you later. That doesn't mean everybody gets exactly the same, Team RPEC is looking at putting more emphasis in one place or another depending on equity and market comparisons. Salary costs for new positions, we've got a list of those that we're going to be talking about, talking with, about, with you here in a few minutes. Health insurance increase, there's a 3% increase shown there, you may have heard that we don't have an increase in our rates, but when we add staff, we have increase in our costs. So that's just to account for the new staff members that would be added and will need to be adjusted based on how that conversation goes in our planning. And then we've got about a 5% increase for supplies and purchase services, some of that is driven by the fact that we are now trying to address some areas where we've had, we've been behind in a lot of different ways and we've got some examples that we're going to share with you a little bit later. And then in terms of the major formula factors, as Cindy mentioned, we're assuming the formula's going to be fully funded, it was in the governor's budget proposal, it's now in the House budget proposal and there's a good chance that will go on through the process as fully funded, which is good news.
Did we hit the 6308 this year?
Yes, well, we are not there yet in terms of how they're distributing it, but we're being told that within this month or next month, they start out with a lower SAT number than they gradually build it up during the year, but by June, they still expect it to be fully funded this year. You've probably heard that the state revenues are lagging because of the tax table issues and collections are falling behind and they keep thinking that it's going to correct itself when everybody files their returns. So, we don't know that for sure, but they're still very optimistic that that's the case. And then as Cindy mentioned also, that we're assuming our weighted attendance or enrollment total will be up by about 100 students and we were up 160 this year, we could easily be that high again for next year, but we're not ready to go that far in our planning until we actually see them here, so that gives you a sense of that. So, when you look down then, in the next set of section, you'll see a revenue total of 73.4 million roughly, that's identical to what Cindy just showed you on the last sheet, so that, that's just capturing that same information. The expenditure side is where we're going to spend most of our discussion tonight and if you look down in total expenditures, kind of right in the dead center of the page, you'll see a 70.569 million total expenditure number. That number is approximately 4.4 million higher than what this year is, a little bit more than that, but that's kind of the ballpark. So it's a combination of the 3.2 million in additional revenues and then using some of the additional balances or the money we hadn't expended yet at this point to get to that point. There is then in the next line in yellow there, you see that 300,000, it's a correction number because this assumption assumes, this projection assumes that everybody that's here this year would be here next year and the reality is folks retire and/or leave the district and when they do typically we hire back somebody that's lower on the pay scale and that's called turnover savings and so we account for that in our budget planning even just to adjust as needed based on the fact that we know that's going to happen and 300,000's kind of been close to what our average has been in recent years. So, that can vary somewhat, but if we don't adjust for that, then we're overstating what our expenditure budget would be. So collectively, when we do all of that and you keep working your way down, we still want to have that $2.6 million transfer to capital projects. If you recall, we bumped our capital projects for this year up to a $2 million worth of summer projects, if you will, and we're going to carry that forward into next year, that was part of our promise with Prop RP and we want to continue that. And after making that adjustment with all these other assumptions included, it shows that we would still have a surplus of about $600,000 in our operating funds. The interesting thing with that though is if you look, the percent of balances actually decreases just slightly even though we have a surplus, because when your expenditures go up, your reserves have to go up with it in order to keep the same percentage. So, but in all, our goal here was to try to get it in a stable footing where we've got a positive balance, which gives us some cushion, if you will, moving forward. But collectively then, using the 1920 as a new baseline and taking some what we think are reasonable but conservative assumptions moving forward, we've got a scenario where we kind of maintain that 18 to 19% operating balances, knowing that typically in any given year, you do slightly better than that. So we're trying to stay in and close to that 20% range, which is our current topic, our current target, if you will. So, again, that 1920 is the column that we're really focusing on for next year and the built-in assumption is here that we're going to have new expenditure items of approximately 4.4 million, if that makes sense. Okay? What kind of questions does that raise? That was my eight to 10-minute budget planning overview, so.
Okay. The next page is a pie chart that shows the 4.4 million in additional budget expenditures that Dr. Monsis mentioned, split according to the areas where tonight's, the information that we are going to present to you tonight would suggest that they be spent. We'll look at this again toward the end, but it shows about 1.1 million in additional staffing positions, 900,000 in supplies and services and 2.4 million in Team RPEC recommendations.
And we've clearly got that marked draft for discussion purposes at the top because obviously based on our conversation tonight, the direction we get from you as the board, we can make any adjustments that we need to. Just for some context, the number for Team RPEC last year was around 2.4 million as well. So, as we were out describing Prop RP to the community and including our staff, we talked about maybe as much as a three-year phase in of salary improvements to try to increase the base salary by around $3,000 in three years. Well, with, if we can do the 2.4 again as a frame of reference, we can get pretty close to that in two years. That's kind of the mindset here, to go ahead and get that invested sooner rather than later in staff. But some of the other decisions we might talk about could get into whether or not that needs to be adjusted one way or the other. So, we're going to hold judgment on that, go through each of those three areas and talk about them individually and then we'll come back to this and talk about the overall picture and where we want to make adjustments. Does that make sense? Okay.
Yes, and Dr. Monsis?
Mm-hmm.
For down the road and for historical purposes, could we keep a document that says kind of what you just said, the things we promised with Prop RP and in each year, what we did in the dollar amount, so we have a record of it?
You bet. We sometimes try to outline that in the budget document itself, it gets a little convoluted in that we're mixing Prop RP revenue with other increases in revenue and they're not necessarily designated for one purpose or another, but we can choose to divide that up and explain it according to what we-
Well, I guess what I'm saying is if we promised 1 million for this or 2% for that, it doesn't really matter where, I mean, the money is the money. I guess what I'm saying is whatever commitments we made, could we have a document showing when and how we did that?
You bet. I think that's very doable and I think what we'll find is that by the end of this year, we'll have more than accomplished what we had committed to at that time, but we will want to put that together in a sensible way, but yes, I think we can demonstrate that.
Yeah, and I'm confident we are meeting those objectives, but just to have it, you know, in one place. Thank you.
All right, we'll come back to the pie chart in a minute and the next, the next document is our staffing recommendations and it's built into tiers and I'll, Dr. Hatfield's going to kind of walk you through what those, what those recommendations are, but before she does, there's one item on here that I wanted to speak to because she doesn't probably want to speak to it herself and that is, we are proposing a reorganization within her department, adding a staff member in the support staff role as an admin assistant and elevating her position back to an assistant superintendent, which it was for many years before a budget cutting process in the past, and then increasing the coordinator position up to a director level position at the same time. So, a one FTE, but some cost implications there, but given the growth in personnel in our district and some of the things we want to do within our strategic plan to support high-quality staff, I think it's warranted. So, I just wanted to touch on that so that she wouldn't have to talk about herself when she's presenting the rest of these, so.
And for our newer board members, this is something we've talked about for several years because when we were down, the budget cuts several years ago, that's something that took a big hit and so we've talked about this for several years of getting her position back up to where it was supposed to be. So this isn't a new thing, we've talked about it for several years.
Thank you. All right, so this is a very similar document to what you've seen in past years, with the exception of we, Cindy did a very nice job and it was very helpful for me, she added first of all what you've already approved, which we typically aren't this, quite this far in the process as we are this year, but then she also made strategic plan connections that I think are helpful in looking at how we're spending or proposing to spend the money and how that relates to our strategic plan.
I second that, that helped a lot in looking at this, thank you.
Yes. So the first section is, are the items that you have previously approved at the November 9th meeting and the January 25th meeting, approximately, well, exactly, eight FTE with one configuration or reconfiguration change there with the school psychologist position. I'm happy to report, we've got six of those positions already filled and we're, I think we can say we're mid-March, which is, is quite early and that's, that's really exciting. We have really gotten some great staff hired. As we look at priority one, the-
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Can you refresh my memory, where were we going to put the school psychologists at? I know it's repurposing the behavior interventions, but I don't remember where we were putting them.
Go ahead.
It's really district-wide, there will be multiple locations. When we talk about some additional programming, later on in our conversation, we'll hope that the school psychologists will also be able to support some additional programming that we're proposing tonight, but it really will be district-wide.
So where will she be housed, or where will they be housed?
That's a functional where we find appropriate office space.
Yes.
They'll need to be flexible because they're going to move a lot.
They are going to move a lot, we have a couple ideas, but they are going to move quite a bit.
Have we even put it out?
Oh, yes, we actually have an-
Posted it, I guess is the right word.
Yeah, we have an interview scheduled next, week after next, next week, spring break, I believe it's the week after next.
I wasn't sure if we'd posted it yet.
We have, we have, yep.
It's been posted for a few weeks now.
It is not an easy position to find, it really is not, but we've got a couple now of very high qualified, highly qualified, interesting candidates, so we're excited about that.
Thank you.
All right, so the next section is titled priority one. These are the items that through multiple discussions, we believe are the most important for the upcoming school year. So just to walk you through them briefly and of course, stop me if you have any questions and then we will pause after this section to go over it in more detail if you'd like. The first item are an additional three FTE to be allotted to classrooms. It says elementary classrooms, we know that we will probably need at least two additional FTE based upon some pinch points we already are seeing at grade levels, but it's possible that that additional FTE could come at the high school, so we're just kind of waiting to see how things play out. So you can see the cost associated there is $180,000. We always, we know that people are our most expensive resource. The next item is specifically for the early childhood center, we are requesting the addition of two early childhood special education teachers as well as two paraprofessionals to support that program. You will see that there's no cost associated because that is reimbursable, so the state will reimburse us those funds, which is really nice. It's nice to have such a large addition and not have to encumber those costs. The third item is probably the, I would say, the most comprehensive piece of this section, which is a proposal for an elementary and middle school alternative program. We are requesting an additional six FTE that would support this program as well as reallocating two FTE currently on staff and then providing support for the program by an additional three FTE, but those individuals would help in be working with other programs as well. Essentially, we are looking at implementing a K-8 alternative program that would provide a therapeutic setting for students that need a higher level of structure and intervention. Again, it lists the positions there, this directly addresses our mental health initiatives and that focus in the strategic plan. The cost is $160,000. Dr. Volker, did you want to add anything there?
I just think it's important in looking at that, that cost looks relatively low for a program as comprehensive as that. We are looking at sharing and using resources that we've been adding since Prop RP, Rick, that are mental health supports. When you're looking at our licensed professional counselor, we'll probably actually be using more than one in that, but they'll do a very much kind of a case management role. Our school psychologists will have to work closely with, with that program to develop comprehensive supports for kids at our highest tier. These are our kids that in our elementary and middle environments struggle greatly to participate in the regular classroom environment and often they take a lot of the resources that we currently have in those buildings to help educate those children. We'd like to refine and focus that and bring them into one location so we can really increase the resources and supports that they're getting while at the same time alleviating that stressor from our other elementary and middle buildings.
The ultimate goal would be for students to return to the regular education setting. It's not a placement that would be continuous, if improvement is made, then they would transition back.
For those that would ask how this will be situated in relation to the high schoolers that are there currently in the building logistically, have we thought about how that will lay out?
Well, absolutely. The great thing is we have a pretty incredible space over there, it is, I mean, it's housed hundreds and hundreds of students before. So, we actually are looking at a design and we didn't want to get too far ahead of ourselves having not spoken with our Board of Education with particulars, but we do have to have some level of planning with that. We've looked at the complete opposite side of the building, it's very easy to segment that building. So we have the other side, what used to be the main office area actually in that building, looking at having two elementary classrooms and one middle school classroom. So it really would not, while Mr. Brown in serving in current role as alternative school principal could support and facilitate and help this process, we really have an administrative intern that will be stationed with that program on the other side of that building. So, the things that are close, I mean, you do have the lunchroom, that is a shared space, there might be some shared space with the library that they're currently using, but no, we really do think it'll be, we'll be able to have our separate program.
And we are assuming in this, a few students might come back from out of district placement.
Oh, absolutely.
So that's helping keeping the cost down too, not many, but you know, it could be two to four that are currently at another off-site setting that we could save that tuition and bring them back here and serve them with this program.
Okay.
What would be, what would be, I think, maximum number? What would be, what would be, I think, maximum number of students that this could facilitate? And will there be any additional transportation costs?
Yes, we have figured in some additional transportation costs. There are a couple other programs and refinements throughout that we're thinking of possibly being able to make some transportation cost savings to actually recoup this. But yes, there will be some increased transportation costs. What was your first question, Kim?
Capacity.
Capacity. So looking at small class size, you're looking at four to six students in each one of those classrooms. So you might start with a program of 18 in there, in the alternate therapeutic alternative school, with the idea that you could grow, you could expand as needed, probably fairly rapidly, but you have to be careful. I mean, these are students that do take a lot of time. They do take, they do need the extra support and attention. So you do want to keep it relatively small, especially as you begin the program. I do want to say this is, as Dr. Hatfield pointed out, it is designed to also be more flexible than what we might consider in other placements. If you have a student, for example, that's coming in from an alternative placement, often we, as a district, have had to look immediately outside. They are now our students. Their parents have moved into our district. We've had to look immediately outside to either continue that alternative placement or find another one for that student, or while making the most appropriate decision for them, whether they have an IEP or not. So now that we can and do have an alternative program, if this moves forward, we believe we'd be able to serve those students. Sometimes it's even in that decision, we need two, three, four weeks to see if this is the appropriate placement, or they can be moved back to their home-school environment. And before, we've been having to make that decision just in our home elementaries or our home middle schools because we haven't had an alternative environment.
So will we still have the Compass program, and this will just be a step above the Compass program?
The Compass program will be separate. It'll be smaller. We're looking at the Compass program, and it's looking to be much more targeted. Our Compass program had a lot of students that might have had a disability in it that wasn't strictly related to emotional disturbance or their behavior. But their behavior was being exhibited for one reason or another environmentally, could be many environmental factors, things like that. So the Compass environment was the only, yes, our only option. We're thinking this environment will house both regular and special education students, but if their IEP says they need the environment that's more specific to that behavioral need, they might still be in the Compass program. They come in and they have a disability that's not related, let's just, for example, you know, a reading disability, but they exhibit numerous behavioral concerns. It might be one where the alternative program is more appropriate. We're really looking at this as a, as a regular education program that could serve special education students as needed.
Will we have a nurse in this, will we have a nurse in the academy then, full-time?
We currently do not have a nurse in the academy full-time. We do not.
We share with Scholl.
We share with Scholl. We're still with the Scholl population. I mean, we have more kids in there, but remember, they're half-day, and so looking at the numbers, you might have 80, 90, 100 kids, 80, 90, 100, and 20 more. We're still at 225 kids. That falls well within what our nurses are used to.
And our nursing supervisor is office at Scholl, so she's very close to the academy and this new program.
That's a good question, but that really does help us as well.
Does Scholl have a playground for, like, the elementary kids to be able to use that are in this program?
We've talked about playground. We've talked about gymnasium. I am actually a little more worried about gymnasium, but they have plenty of gymnasium space, being that Scholl was essentially, you know, our only school on this campus. So I think we can work out all of those logistics.
And will the hours for elementary and middle be the same as that? Will they all run the same time, or will there be staggered based on their grade level?
It is going to be staggered based on their grade span.
Span, yeah.
Yes. So really, you might have an opportunity of a middle school student who still might want to participate in a Misha activity. If their behavior and grades and attendance warrant, they could still qualify to participate in activities. So we want to keep them on basically the same timeframe. So if they're eligible, we want our kids to be able to earn up to those things, no matter where they are placed. So that's something we've talked about.
Do you have a question, Kim?
Oh, yes, thank you. Just to clarify, so this program or project, it, the benefit will be, it will help improve classroom management. It will relieve some duties and pressures from classroom teachers. Is that safe to say?
Oh, yes, I think that's safe to say. If you're talking about moving...
These aren't students, these aren't students that we would normally be looking to refer outside, that we would have been doing that anyway. These are actually students that would have been in the classroom requiring more support in the classroom.
No, the vast majority of these are in our classroom. These students will be coming from our classrooms, and they're in them right now.
Yeah, okay.
And you said, you said most of these are, would be our Tier 3s?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so moving through the list, the next item is an HVAC technician. This is a position that's been on the list for many years, and it's here again this year. Dr. Monce spoke to the next item. And moving on, the high school, we have a, you may not be aware of this, but one of our counselors there, our school counselors, is a .7 FTE. We are requesting that that be expanded or increased to a full FTE. Of course, we know the needs of our students, both in career planning, course planning, as well as just mental health supports, so it certainly justifies that need. A 1 FTE custodial position is also being requested. We have continued to expand our square footage. We have just spoke of a program we will be expanding, hopefully, so that will take more space that will need to be cleaned and maintained.
So do we have a dedicated person for the academy building?
We have someone that comes in at noon.
It's just an evening position.
An evening position. So he's a full-time, but he comes in after lunch, so it's not noon. It's probably 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock, like 3:00 to 11:30. And then during the day, the daytime custodian at Scholl supports if there's a need. But they've...
And I had a question on the counselor.
Go ahead.
And so I think that was, and I think that was the only counselor thing I saw in here. Is there still going to be some ongoing discussion through either mental health task force or wherever is appropriate in looking at the counselors and the staffing and job duties and all those things we talked about before when it comes to the duties of counselors?
Yes, I think that is very safe to say. I met with the counselors from the high school today, just trying to talk through our summer school process and how we can streamline it for them. I think we need to take a very deep look at all the responsibilities and how we can streamline and be more efficient, and maybe even take some things off of their plate or come back with additional staff in the future so that they can continue to support some of the mental health concerns we know we have. I think...
Right, because the discussion was a lot of, you know, we're putting multi-varied responsibilities on them that sometimes overlap and don't allow the full, you know, resolution, you know, when they're trying to do two things at once. So I think that's worth continuing to pursue.
Yeah.
All right, so the next item is a girls' wrestling coach. In case you didn't know it, we had girls in the wrestling program this year. I believe two actually went to state. There has been enough interest in this program that we believe it warrants a coach to be dedicated to that program. Also, you will see the request to add some extra days to our process coordinators' contract. Currently, our process coordinators, based upon the level that they serve, have varying numbers of days of extra days to complete their duties. Extra days was something that was looked on, upon many years ago when we were doing budget reductions, and this is just one of many that haven't been put back in place since those years that we were reducing. So Dr., Mrs. Wally has requested this, and we believe that it's very much warranted. In addition to that... Kim, yes?
And what are the process, what are the duties, generally speaking, of a process coordinator?
Process coordinators facilitate the special education process. Ashley, would you like that? You go right ahead. Much more expertise than I.
We help with, like, running or being in LEA for IEP meetings. We do all the paperwork, finalizing paperwork. We work with incoming students, transfer students in and out of the district. There's a lot of beginning-of-year and end-of-year work for teacher, for process coordinators, just in regards to preparing, we call them brown files, or their special education files at the end of the year, just making sure everything's organized in order. All the components are there. We transfer files from building to building at the end of each year. There's just a lot of upfront work that we do with, I mean, I even do things like with master scheduling and caseloads and doing all that work.
Planning for professional development and training.
Absolutely. Running professional development, too.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
In addition, on the, kind of the special education realm, we are requesting some dollars, a fairly small amount, $3,750, to pay for some training for our special education teachers as well as paras and how to best support students when they are working in collaboration in those classrooms. Okay, continuing on to the next page, a Panther Pride Assistant Coordinator. That is actually a program that we had initially when the program began, and just for a variety of reasons, it wasn't deemed as being effective. So we have revisited that, and based upon what we would like to see our program become, maintaining the staff, providing for their development, planning activities, we believe that an assistant coordinator would be very beneficial for the program. In addition, that that program extends from 6:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night. So covering that timeframe is difficult for one administrator as well. High school fall trap shooting is another coaching stipend we are requesting. We currently have a spring trap shooting season. Many of the schools in the state of Missouri are a year-round sport, and many of the competitions actually are in the fall versus the spring. So our students aren't able to partake in that because we don't have that offering. Another coaching or extra duty stipend, our robotics team, and hopefully you've kind of heard some of the things that are going on with them, will have the opportunity. I think they're coming to, they're doing a competition here locally pretty quickly.
Next weekend.
Oh, next weekend, okay. When this program first started, it was truly an early-stage beginning. We had no idea the time or the commitment that it was going to entail. The robotics season, the build season is very intense. It's very time-intensive, but our team also does things outside of the build season. So when we're looking at our coaching stipends comparatively to the amount of time spent, we think it makes sense to elevate our robotics team coaches, both the lead coach and the assistant coaches, on our extra-duty salary schedule to more fairly compensate them for their time.
So Lisa, are you, are you saying, so what you're saying then is like, when we look at the girls' wrestling coach at $7,200, then theoretically, they're spending more time than the fall trap shooting coach at $2,500. So these are directly tied to time?
Time, number of students, a variety of things. We, several years ago, analyzed all of that, and it's our intent to do so again next year, just to be sure we are maintaining that equity. Much like we look at internal equity among positions for our support staff, it's important to look at that for coaches as well. But yes, it's a time factor, student factor, a lot of things go into that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. Leading up to our high school robotics opportunities, our middle schools have jumped on board and have been implementing a program on a volunteer basis. So we think it's important that we add that position so that those individuals can be compensated for that time they're spending and dedicating to our kids. We've talked a lot about Elementary Project Lead the Way. We do need some training for staff, and this will be for the Year 2 Elementary Project Lead the Way additions in the amount of $2,000. Scholl does not have a dedicated individual for their yearbook, and again, it was just one of those things. As we planned and reconfigured, it was overlooked. So we think it's important that they have the same level of programming and staffing that all of our elementaries do. And lastly, in this section, we are requesting to add an SLP stipend for the individual who takes the lead of our speech-language pathologists. This would be very similar to a high school department lead or department chairperson, and there's a stipend associated with that to serve in that role. So I would be happy, or any of us would be happy, to entertain any additional questions you have related to the Priority 1 staffing requests.
And can you just refresh my memory? The budget presented, which levels does it include?
It would include all of the ones we've covered so far, with maybe a little bit of flexibility to go beyond that.
Okay. All right. Again, we can always come back and revisit anything as we move forward. So Priority 2 staffing requests, any requests that we're putting before you tonight, we see and deem as very reasonable. It's just you eventually have to begin drawing some lines in what we feasibly can support in a given year. So while we do find these very having merit, we don't believe they rise to the level of necessity for this coming year. They're all, there's nobody sitting here that would say they're not important, but again, they just didn't rise to Level 1 at this time. So the first three items on the staffing, Priority 2 staffing requests, all deal with administrative assistance. We do believe that if we are allowed to add the program, the K-8 alternative program that we discussed, that there is going to be some alleviation of some of the help that administrators might need at the elementary and even the secondary or middle level. So we have there that we would like, in this priority, to request the addition of two administrative interns at the elementary level. We currently have one. And then also one for South Middle School. East Middle School currently has an administrative intern, and it is listed there to change that to be a full assistant principal. Enrollment growth will eventually dictate that as an absolute need, but we're not quite there yet. But again, we find these important, but we think we are doing some things within our Priority 1 that will address these areas and alleviate some of the concerns we have. The fourth item on the list...
I thought East Middle, I thought East Middle School had something other than just the principal.
There's the principal, assistant principal, and administrative intern.
So what does East Middle School have right now?
East Middle School has a principal, an assistant principal, and an administrative intern. So an administrative intern is a certified administrator that is paid on the teacher salary schedule with some extra days to their contract. At South currently, it is just the lead principal and one assistant principal. There is not an intern.
I think, you know, it would be, it would be useful to have, you know, down the road, a better understanding of how the administrative interns and assistant principals are utilized in terms of what, you know, what job duties are they doing? And not just to try to justify those positions, but to see, I mean, is there too much administrative stuff going on? I mean, are there things we need to be cutting back on? Or are these, you know, or are these resources, you know, needed and all those, you know, things are important?
Yeah.
I think it would be fair to say, Kim, that the administrative intern is serving as the role as an assistant principal at a reduced budgetary impact. It is a way in which aspiring administrators can gain some administrative experience for their resume in a way that we provide support at our building level for, as I said, less impact on the budget. Assistant principals, not only do we expect them to assist in the instructional leadership in the building, but they take primarily the lead for discipline...
Supervision.
Supervision, things like that, where our hope would be our lead principal could take the main role of instructional leadership and being in classrooms and guiding instructional strategies, intervention, supports.
I guess what I'm saying is if, if this is a necessary position, then we should have it everywhere. I mean, you know, I guess I'm trying to justify why do sometimes we have it and sometimes we don't, and what are the duties, so that we can make that decision. I don't mean right now, tonight, because I think they're in the right category here right now, but I guess I don't feel like I have a great, a good enough understanding of what happens if we don't have an assistant principal. You know, what's the bad thing that happens when we don't have an administrative intern? What's the student performance-related thing that happens if we do or don't have these?
Is there, along with that, is there a reason why we don't have an intern at South being a Priority 1 versus a Priority 2, so that it's balanced for each?
There is an enrollment difference. About 150 students, roughly, enrollment difference between the two schools.
And then other things on the Priority 2 page, the secondary math instruction coach sounds, just by the name of it, it sounds like it would be more of a higher priority. So if you could talk to... So if you could talk to that and why that ended up here, you know, what is-
Absolutely.
The logic on that one?
Absolutely, we'll go back to community partnership. But I do believe on the secondary math instructional coach, that we are focusing currently on professional development, that we have set a plan for this summer, we've set a plan for this school year, and we really are wanting to see the evolution of our math achievement and those positive increases related to that professional development. This is one that I would not be surprised if it were not on a list that you might see in the future, possibly next year, maybe even restructured differently in looking at some district-wide math support. But right now, it really is the thought in our department as we look, it's going to be that professional development focus. How can we take those relatively new, the elementary very new, at the secondary still two-years-old, very new programs, and provide the type of professional development where teachers will feel comfortable and those' scores will increase? So that's really what we are thinking at, and that's why we were able to place this in a Priority Two category for now, and I will say for now, in this area. And if it's one that we need to revisit and bring back to the board, I can promise you, then I will bring it back.
Could you refresh my-
Do you think so, in focusing on professional development, I mean, that's going to take a year or two? And then you said ultimately you could see it coming back anyway. I mean, would there be benefit to just going ahead and doing it now and providing the extra support while you're doing the professional development?
Well, there is always benefit, that's a very difficult and great question, Kim. There's always benefit in gaining additional support in someone who has a specific expertise in what is a difficult content area. I think we always have to weigh as well, what are the other priorities that we're listing, or can we do this in another way until we determine what is exactly, what's going to move the needle the most?
My suggestion would be we kind of get through the rest of the list, and we can circle back and say, okay, are there any of these that we would say that would be the next thing we'd want to add and talk about that?
Well, before you move on real quick, can you refresh my memory on what we're doing at the elementary levels with the math instruction, with that's where our scores were the weakest?
Well, we currently, we implemented a brand-new program and just ran it due to professional development and trying to provide quality professional development. We did it in two stages, so K-1 and 5, and then next year, we will have second, third, and fourth grade that will implement a new math resource. So with that, we have started with professional development, and we've done a lot of professional development to start this year, last summer, and we have a lot more planned for this summer. So we really do think that is going to take a little bit of time. But to Kim's point, it's not, I'm not just speaking like professional development is beginning now and tonight. We've been working on it quite a bit already this year and last summer. I'm just saying it takes upwards of that year, year and a half, two, for our staff members to come comfortable and really teach that program well.
Do we have a math interventionist? I know we have reading, here we have a math interventionist.
We do not have certified math interventionists in our district. We have teacher associates that we are assigning in that math intervention role, and it would be more a math support. We do not have certified math interventionists. We do have certified reading interventionists. And I think that's something, too, that we'll have to come back and possibly revisit as we talk about moving forward and into next year and the years beyond. But I do think it's truly extremely important that you focus on Tier One instruction first. You cannot, sometimes we get caught in that trap that we're constantly trying to intervene, 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 and then you realize the numbers that you're intervening with are there because of Tier One instruction. You should never have to intervene with 30% of your kids, with 40% of the kids. That means your Tier One instruction isn't where it needs to be, and that's where the professional development starts. That's why I cannot look at this and say, I won't bring this back. Because if it's something that our kids need, and so I will absolutely bring it back to this group and say, hey, this is a Priority One. But I think we have to give-
Just to clarify, just to clarify, let's say all the professional development was done and succeeded, you're still going to have some students that need math intervention.
Yes.
Do we currently have employees in all of the buildings to do math intervention, assuming all the PD worked and it was just the standard percentage that normally needed intervention? Do we, are we fully staffed on that? That's why I'm confused.
We have, I think it's four elementary schools that have a teacher associate that is assigned to math intervention. So that would leave us three that do not.
Based upon titles.
Yeah, and it really has to do with need. That is a position that we move and assign based on need. I'll be frank, we have some elementary schools that honestly probably do not need that additional support, even with our struggles. We had a couple elementary schools, one in particular, that scored very, very well. I would not want to assign a teacher associate to do specific intervention. I think even the reading interventionists, or the math teachers, or the teachers at the grade level could support those students that are still struggling, and the smaller numbers. Now, in the other buildings, that's why we have those four teacher associates. Is it something we might look to expand? The great thing about that, we could come back to you in September and say, hey, I've got our map data back, I have a fall NWEA, and come to the board and say, well, I'd go to Dr. Monson's Cabinet first, but then, I know he would say, then we take it to the board and say, we need two more, or we need three more math interventionists who are teacher associates to help. And I don't have any problem asking that as well.
You have your core math teachers.
Yeah, as a reminder, and thank you for reminding, we did hire an additional core math teacher for the middle school for the same reason. So now each middle school does have a specific assigned certified teacher to help with math support. So it's the elementary level where we're kind of looking and talking right now. This position is for the secondary, because the complexities of 612 math and the specificity and the skill that's required to coach teachers, when you're talking from sixth-grade math to calculus, is pretty intense. So this position would be more that professional development. This position wouldn't be as much of the classroom support. At the elementary, it's the classroom. I really think we might want to talk about presenting proposals in the future that combine the two.
Well, I, I think instructional coaches are extremely important, and for me, I would have put that as a Priority One standard, or Priority One staffing request. But one thing I've noticed just in working in schools is that, that position has to really be done with fidelity, and you have to have a really good person in that position, because that, I mean, whenever we took budget cuts, that was one of the first things they did away with, because people were questioning, well, what are you doing all day? Because they didn't see that, their support started to wean after a while. So it just is, I think it's a great thing to have, but as long as that person that is in that position is just, they have to be-
Dynamic.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I just want to reiterate again, there are many other positions we could have put before you on pages and pages of paper. Anything that we're putting before you tonight, we see merit in. It's just that dividing line of what we think is doable this year, when we're looking at that graph that Cindy showed you, and maintaining what we want to with reserves and everything else. Believe me, if we could say wave your magic wand and give us all the tiers, we would, I might do a cartwheel or something, it would really surprise you. But again, there's nothing here that we don't find merit in.
And again, we're going to circle back with all of these and talk again once we get through the list. So let's kind of work through the list, then we'll circle back. We knew this would be where we'd have most of our discussion tonight, and so we want to kind of make it with everything on the list as we go through it, if we would.
I do have a quick, just a general question about the way that it's set up, is what is at the top?
Not necessarily.
Okay, perfect.
I'll give a little background on that, too. Where most of these budget requests, in the staffing and later in supplies and purchase services, most of these come from our building administrators and department heads. We ask for submissions of budget requests. And so if a, you know, the high school principal has asked for something, you're going to see it here, whether it ended up being a high priority or not. So where, you know, a lot of that is, where it falls on here is a function of other things that might be going on in the district that that high school principal didn't consider when they put it in. And I shouldn't have said high school, because now I'm singling out a gosh, it's the elementary. Elementary, but anyway, it still works the same. And then as far as the order that they get put on this list, you know, I'm not an educator, so I, I might put the high-dollar items at the top, I might have, you know, it really means nothing.
All right, just to jump back one position, the community partnership coordinator is a position that we have discussed in the past, would support our strategic plan in terms of helping us create those community partnerships. Then the last two positions, a vocal music accompanist specifically for South Middle School. We will, at this time, East Middle School has not requested that same type of position. This would be someone that supports the choral director in preparation for concerts, things like that, not an everyday position. And should East ever want just to consider that, of course, it would be an equal, an equal thing. And then maintenance technician, we currently have a part-time position, which really became part-time because of the individual who filled the position at the time, several years ago requested to go to part-time, and we have, we have accommodated that. He was a great guy, did great work for us. But Mr. Dobson believes that we would benefit from having that back to a full-time position.
Is our service orders went up enough to our service request?
I think Mr. Dobson definitely sees the benefit of having that for their department.
Remember that there was an HVAC tech added in Priority One.
No, I'm very much for that one.
Well, and just to be clear, our HVAC techs do other things, too. And so that, having a second one of those will help with all the rest of the work orders, I would think.
We continue to be very fortunate with the extent of expertise of the gentleman in our maintenance department. All right, I believe that takes us to the end of the Priority Two staffing requests. You can see the total there of those items, and it sounds like we need to have a little further discussion about this.
Let's go ahead and just mention the last group, and then we'll circle back.
All right, well, three comes after two. So again, these are items that we, you're welcome, items that we didn't elevate up to the Level Two or the Level One. And again, I'm not going to spend much time there, but a leap, teacher assistant to address the potential growth in those numbers, it would not be a certified position, but rather a support position. High school vocal music assistant, the request has been made to change the role of this, of the position of accompanist to encompass more than just accompanying, more of the coordination, the arranging of contests and clinicians and things like that. Part-time warehouse staff, currently, our maintenance staff are helping do some things that a warehouse staff person would do, specifically with non-technical work orders, deliveries, things like that. Child nutrition field manager has been requested to enhance or provide more training opportunities and to improve point-of-sale procedures out in our buildings. In-school suspension supervisors at the middle school. Right now, we do have individuals at both buildings that have this title, but they are serving a dual role. They are the focus facilitator who is managing that component of our BIST program, and they are also the ISS supervisor. Essentially, what this request is, is to hire an additional person at each building so that we could separate the focus room from ISS. We've had it both ways within the district. Again, talking about the K-8 Alternative Program earlier, we see that as a measure that could alleviate the need for this. And then finally-
And so, and does that pan out with the data? I mean, are the students that would be likely to be in the new program, the ones that have been in in-school suspension?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And out-of-school suspension and-
And focus room.
Referrals, yeah.
Buddy room.
And office.
And another quick question on the high school vocal music assistant, I have only anecdotal evidence in my head, so does anyone know how much the high school music program has grown? I mean, has the students in the high school music program increased 30% in the past year or two?
Yes.
Probably closer to double.
Yes, they have to have, Kim, they have to have two concerts now every time, where they have a concert, and they have to divide it.
Yeah, and I, that is my anecdotal evidence, but I wasn't before that. So to me, that actually makes sense. I'm surprised that's not, why isn't that a number one, given that the program doubled?
Yeah.
We want them all.
Teacher's very talented. We think he could do what he's currently doing.
I'm saying, does that one actually have data to go with it?
It does.
I mean, same with the stipends, you know, something, the student increase, you get more, so.
And I think you'll see that some of the items that move up to Priority One have been on the list for several years, first is Priority Three, and then moving on up. So absolutely cannot disagree with that. And much like something else you've seen occasionally as a computer technician, just again, in increasing the FTE for our technology department.
They've done a remarkable job keeping up with all the devices. Pretty amazing.
And are we, are we seeing decreases in their response times? I mean, is there factual data to support the need for this?
The number-
I didn't think their response, I didn't think their response times were going down in the last report we got.
They have not decreased. Response times, correct, Dr. Pettingill?
Well, I will say, I was really wanting to barter for the high school supervisors to be split, but with the new program, I think, I'm willing to wait a year now to see how the new program helps alleviate some of that.
I appreciate your, your trust in the, kind of the process there, thank you.
So kind of circling back, if we go back to any of the Tier Two or Tier Three request items, I heard some level of support for the math instructional coach position. We're willing to have that conversation with you as a board, if there was something there that you thought was really important. And just for our newer board members, it has not been uncommon for the board to say, well, we need to do this or that in addition to what you've got in mind. Or you may even want to trade with something higher on the list that we valued higher, but maybe you wouldn't. So we're open to that discussion. This is where you get to weigh in as board members and give us some level of guidance here.
I just have a question. I mean, I think admin interns are extremely important, and while I would like for all three of them to be something that we could have, if we were to say by highest need in the building, where would you put priority at between those three?
Go ahead, Dr. Volker.
Okay, well, there's a couple ways to approach this. We're at the admin interns, there's a couple ways to approach this. I really think if you're looking at the admin interns, even at the elementary level, there is a possibility instead of hiring two FTEs, but to hire one elementary admin intern, that I do think could support in two locations and really support those principals, both of them, so they're able to do more of that instructional role. A couple, as you see, Raymore and Eagle Glenn would probably be where. I would ask that additional support be if we had to prioritize those three positions. But then at the same time, there is a possibility of increasing the support at South Middle School. It is very difficult for me to say, because those are two very different levels. I mean, you're talking about-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's good.
Well, when you look at, when you look at actual performance and data and, you know, in terms of scores and stuff, where is the greatest need for additional instructional support?
Well, when you look across the board, I do think it would be at that elementary level. I do believe it would be a shared position between Raymore and Eagle Glenn, and that would, I would have to rank that as the highest priority when considering all factors.
Would that look like, maybe like two days at one and three days at the other, like splitting it?
Yes, yeah. I think it can be based on need. It can be very cyclical. I mean, you can have stretches where these two weeks, we need to get these math walkthroughs done, we need to get these evaluations, we need to have these conversations. And to do that, I need our principals to be able to focus on that while the admin intern is focusing on the needs in the classrooms, the behavioral needs in the classrooms. And that could be really powerful.
I'm assuming we've looked at our incoming elementary numbers to South Middle School that were still going to be lower at South than at East?
Yes, yeah, they're growing very little. East is growing faster at this point. I would add too, when Dr. Volker first started contemplating the alternative program, he even discussed taking our current elementary admin intern and bringing it over as a way to, again, save money and not have to add that position. So we went back and forth and discussed that, and we thought the idea would be go ahead and add one for the, a dedicated one for the alternative placement program, but then at the same time, leave one at the elementary level, knowing that even that one could move potentially around some if needed, or if we add one, we can, again, do some sharing based on need. So yes, if we wanted to pick one, doing one of those, we could still hopefully cover some ground, if you would.
It would be a benefit.
I like that idea, because, I mean, to be able to still support two buildings and save a little at the same time. And then-
Yeah, that sounds good. Is that something going, that could apply to the math instructional coach as well?
I think they're already planning, I mean, it's all three, secondary, right?
Yes, that, that secondary math is already for, would be for all three buildings. Yes, that, that secondary math is already for, would be for all three buildings. So on the secondary math instructional coach?
What was your question, Kim?
Okay. Yeah, I, okay, so that answers my question.
Okay.
And then I was going to ask, on the Community Partnership Coordinator, is there a way that we could maybe offer a stipend to somebody to start looking at, at building those, as a part-time, like a stipend position for them, to see if that's something we could cover through that, rather than paying a full, or getting a full-time employee for that?
That, that might be an option. And we can explore that a little further and maybe reconsider that later. Another strand here, or another opportunity that might be related, and I'm going to be sharing more information with the board later, but we are talking to the Kaufman Foundation about some of the initiatives they're trying to do, and one of them includes building community partnerships for real-world learning opportunities, which is something we've been talking about, and we've got it in our strategic plan. So there's an outside chance we might get some funding from them potentially through a grant in the future that would help with that as well. So a stipend might be a good way to start, but we're really, I mean, we're really talking about somebody with some specialized skills here, I mean, high on the communication and marketing skills that can help us in more ways than, than one. That's contemplated to do a lot of different things, so, but we could look at it...
Is there, is there any...
Go ahead.
Sorry, it's hard for me to tell.
That's all right, go ahead.
So my other question on that would be possibly hiring more like a consultant. Now, I'm a little skeptical on that because, you know, building relationships and everything you've said about the specific needs, but by the same token, because of the very specific needs, you know, is there any type of consulting organization, so, you know, maybe we pay $20,000 instead of $70,000, and it's done more on a short-term basis instead of a long-term commitment of a full FTE, you know, in perpetuity?
No, that's another good idea. I like that as well. I, if, and this is one where I think if you, if you can give us a couple more months to see where this Kaufman opportunity may take us, by the time we get to June when we're finalizing this budget, we'll have a better sense, I think, of where we're at with that, at least. We're hoping that they're going to be identifying district partners fairly soon, so.
How long has the South Middle School admin intern been as an admin intern at that building?
We don't...
Or East Middle School, I apologize.
When we reconfigured and went to two middle schools.
So it's two years.
Two years.
Mm-hmm.
This is year two, yeah. And it was because of the higher enrollment at the building.
I would like to see us move the part-time warehouse person to Priority One, because I think that would also help on that maintenance technician, because if we can get somebody just to do stuff that our technicians don't have to do, that, you know, lesser skill. Any other thoughts on that?
Dr. Pettingill, would, I think we had the maintenance technician elevating ahead of the warehouse position in part because of having a greater skill set.
The skill.
I, I think was the interest there. If we were going to do one, I think Scott would request that we do.
And that's, because I just know we've expanded our building capabilities so much in the last couple of years, and with putting out so much outlay for capital improvements on all of our heating and air systems and all that stuff, you know, I'd like to make sure that he's got the proper staff to keep up on the maintenance and stuff, make it last as long as it can.
With getting another half-time FTE in the Maintenance Department in addition to the HVAC, I would argue, and I think Scott would agree, while we love the idea of having that position back at the warehouse, making our, our, our regular tech full-time, we could utilize that part-time position.
Is he willing to go full-time, the person that's in that position?
It's actually vacant.
Oh, okay.
So the, the individual who was filling it has left, and it would be, I believe, much easier to find a highly qualified person if it was full-time, not a part-time position.
What does the rest of the board think on that one?
Definitely.
So I think we would all be in agreement to move that one to a number one. He does such a good job in that department, I want to make sure that we're giving him what he needs there.
So I've heard so far...
I think the High School Vocal Music Assistant, just given that that program's doubled, I don't see why we wouldn't add assistance to that. And it's $10,000.
I think we all agree with that one.
Go ahead, Billy.
And I don't know...
Billy?
No, I just, I agree with Kim on that one, yes.
Yeah, the High School Vocal needs to go to One.
I would say the instructional...
And I would like to see us add the math instructional coach in some form or another.
Yes.
That was one thing, when I met with the Advisory Committee there at Stonegate last week, that they were saying they needed a math interventionist. And that was one of their priorities that they, Dr. Volker and I talked about that today.
And just, this is specifically for grade six through 12.
But just the need for that.
Yeah, sure. It was, we had a general math need conversation.
Sure.
And I think we'll have to consider it moving forward, too.
And that's why I said, I'm not sure what the format is. I mean, I know it's high school, but I guess what I'm saying is, I see a need for a math instructional coach. I, I don't know if we know the grades and where they're actually needed, but I feel like we know we meet them.
This is, and the instructional coach is a, we have four instructional coaches currently in the district, so we have two dedicated to the elementary school that kind of cover everything. We have one dedicated at the high school and one dedicated to the two middle schools. And they are mentors for our new teachers, they support instructional strategies. Any teacher that needs or wants help can benefit from our instructional coaches. So what this proposal specifically is, is to add an additional coach for math specifically at that six through 12. And Dr. Volker, if you want to speak a little more to that?
I just think the challenges of coaching math teachers at the secondary level is immense. I mean, your knowledge base, your skill in that, it's very specialized. So having an instructional coach who serves across multiple content areas is doable, but when you get to specific areas such as secondary math, you really need someone and to be able to find someone that specializes in that area. That's why this is listed specifically as a secondary math coach. Now, at the elementary level...
What did our, what did our test scores, like if you look at our scores, where would that point needing the most?
They would point, our middle school level needs support. And I really believe it is in Tier One instruction. So yeah, we need help with intervention.
I would propose that we get the math instructional coach to focus on the areas where our test scores indicate it's needed the most.
Yeah, we need, yeah, it would be at the middle level. So, and that's why it is listed.
That's why I'm saying it's, that's where they'll spend their time.
Yes.
It's just the option is there for them to be.
Correct. Yep. And I didn't want to limit it too much. I mean, I really didn't want to say just middle school.
Go ahead, Kim.
I'm done.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we have moved up to Priority One, the High School, Middle School Secondary Math Instructional Coach. We've moved up the Maintenance Technician One, and we've moved up the High School Vocal Music Assistant to a One.
And One.
And one admin intern for elementary level.
Yes.
And that intern will serve at two locations.
Yes.
Or more, depending on the need.
Or more. I think it'd be flexible.
And I would just like to clarify back on the math instructional coach. Just because it says High School and Middle School, I don't know that we're saying High School, we're saying where it's needed most, right?
Correct.
That might just be Middle School.
No, you're correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, do we need to take things from Priority One to even this out? How does that work?
Okay, so here's...
We, we have a, like a windfall here, don't we?
So here's, I mean, I mean, am I looking at this wrong, where we've approved, you know, the 1.062, but with the priorities, we got 577. I mean, it looks like... No, the, the 1062 is, the first two categories combined.
Oh, okay.
So, so we, we don't have quite that much flexibility, but what we do have, I'm kind of just going to send now over here doing some quick and dirty math.
Yeah, yeah.
We, with 100 and, it's approximately 163,000 with the four different changes that we've talked about here. I think we're, if we don't make any other changes based on the next list we're going to look at, I think we're still in a pretty decent position. Because we, we had intentionally built in a little bit of flexibility there because we knew this would happen and we'd have this discussion. We might be a little bit higher, but I don't know that it's enough that we need to go back and revisit anything above that, if we're comfortable with those.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the next set of recommendations before we get much further, so that we can see them.
But we, we don't have any problem with any of these suggestions. We've had, this is, this discussion is exactly what we've been having in cabinet for six weeks now.
Yes.
So we go back and forth on that, and so that's good feedback, we appreciate it. I think Cindy's going to then get into the Supplies and Purchase Services, much of which is tied to some of these other positions we've just talked about.
Right, so the next schedule you have is the Supplies and Purchase Services recommendations, and it's organized in the same way, where we're starting out with items that are previously approved or planned, and so we just start with that on the first page. The first item there, $38,400, is just the supplies and setup costs that would be needed for those new positions that we're requesting to add. So, you know, every new teacher that comes on, every new administrator, they're going to have to have a desktop computer, they're going to have to have a laptop, you know, that sort of stuff. Same thing for the school psychologist, and the third line there is the previously presented estimate for the orchestra supplies. The fourth li, item is a new one for us this year, and it's the, the cost of tuition for the online courses, so as our students sign up for our online courses. And to be totally honest, that's a shot in the dark right now. We really have no idea. But between now and the finalization of the budget in June, we'll have actual enrollments to go off of, so we can have a, a better estimate there.
How do we deal with that this semester in budget?
This semester, you'll be seeing that in the budget amendment later this month.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Is summer school...
Go ahead.
Do online, do online courses taken by students in the summer and summer school go into this year's budget or next year's budget?
Those will be, have to be paid for out of this year's budget, yeah. For this, this year's summer school will be this year's budget.
There are some classes in July.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the, the Project Lead the Way course additions that were approved when the grant was approved. Of course, a lot of that is paid for by the grant, but this is our expected share. We have a five-year contract with our, our transportation provider, Apple Bus, and that has a three-year escalation clause in it, so we have, have to plan for an increase there each year. And then our technology plan, we've traditionally had a $100,000 increase in our five-year technology plan, and this is the last year of that plan.
That's going to, that was a question. Are we going to redo the technology plan this fall then?
Yes.
Okay.
And when you see our, well, we'll, we'll come to part of that in a minute here. Okay, so, that's all right. So the next page starts our Priority One Supplies and Purchase Services Recommendations. The first line there is Supplies for Growth-Related Staffing for the Priority One Staffing Positions. And you'll see later, we're going to have to add a little bit, my quick calculation is telling me that that is probably now about $14,000 based on the positions that we just pulled up. Property and Casualty Insurance is going to go up a little bit each year. It's also going to go up for our Workers' Compensation Insurance for the new positions that we're adding. The estimated supplies, including transportation, for our new K-8 Alternative Program is about $30,000. The next line is our CTE enrollments at CAS Career Center, Summit Tech, and Southland CAPS Program. We want to be sure that we have enough budgeted there so that we can fill as many slots as those facilities will give us, and so...
That's what I was going to say, are we, are we able to get more spots yet, or are we still...
We were able to get more spots, and we had, yes, and we had students to fill them. That's why you're seeing this budget increase, which we see as a good thing, good thing for our students.
It's a two-part process. The students have to meet certain qualifications, and then they have to offer the slots for us to take, and the combination, what looks like we're going to get an increase of about 12 to 15 students.
Yeah, yeah, it's good.
Yeah, if there's any waiting lists, it's...
And so this, this would fully fund that if they all made it?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that per program, the slots?
It varies.
It varies for each one.
They control that allocation, and I don't know exactly how they determine that, but sometimes they will, they'll offer it out proportionally, and then if some school doesn't fill theirs, then they reallocate them to another school. Pretty common.
Do we track, and I don't know if this is possible, the students that go into those programs at Career Tech and Summit Tech and then stay in those tracks and actually utilize what they get?
We do that as part of the six-month follow-up survey. So if they're employed in an area related to their fields, we get a big check mark for that, so we don't really go beyond that.
So it's showing that their students are using it after they graduate?
Correct.
Okay.
Placement rates are very high for those programs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item is some additional E-Rate enhancements. Ryan mentioned in his technology review last month that we had, this is last year of the E-Rate cycle, we have the advantage, the opportunity to take advantage of some additional funds there. So the, the cost that you're seeing there is really just 50% of the total amount we would spend on these enhancements, but this is after we get our rebate. And the next item is some email monitoring software to help with technology integration and to help with just monitoring our student, student email and complying with a lot of new state and federal regulations. Of course, if we have a new girls wrestling team, we have to have some uniforms. Middle school robotics supplies to go along with that stipend.
Is that enough?
Well, the, the programs were begun with foundation grants.
Right.
And so this would be to establish an ongoing budget for them.
Sorry, I didn't mean to sound surprised there.
No, that's okay. Okay, on the next page, we have the Elementary Project Lead the Way Supplies to, for year two of Elementary Project Lead the Way. And that's mostly iPads, if I remember right.
iPads for different modules that they go at the younger ages. They're pretty, our kids and teachers have really loved that expansion, so they're looking forward to continued expansion.
So another goal I have with the budget is to get as many of the areas as we can on a five-year or even longer, long-term plan, planning for replacement of the things that we have that we're going to need. And so we've made a good start on that this year with the Fine Arts Programs, with both band and vocal music. And it's very clear that the first thing that the high school is going to need in their five-year plan is new marching uniforms. Those are 10-year-old uniforms, and if you've been a band mom, you can see that they are just pinned together. They're needing a new, a new set of uniforms. Vocal music in their five-year plan are asking for $21,000 for the first year. That includes some risers and other sound equipment.
Just, and I know the booster clubs wonderful and help a lot of these. Have they been able to help in these areas?
They do, they do. They, these, they're, they're funded a lot by their, by their booster clubs.
Yeah, the reality is, the booster clubs are extremely active and really support in many ways, but there, the building budgets probably haven't been enough support. And so what Cindy's really talking about is, you'll see this $60,000 for band uniforms this year, next year it might be all instrument replacements. But we need to build that into the budget to get an ongoing cycle, because right now it's just whenever we can, between the building budget and the booster club, try to squeeze something in to make a purchase, so.
You need to be using your mic, too. Thank you. No, I'm all for the five-year plan, I think that's excellent.
Okay. Safety and inspections and repairs. This is for the, the bleachers and gym equipment. We, I think this started out with a recommendation from our insurance company that we have a third-party independent inspections done, and then we're going to also need to allocate some of the resources for expected repairs there. A Classified Professional Development Day, in our, in our attempts to give some more meaningful professional development to our classified staff, we'd like to have a day where we bring them all in, we can give them a meal, we can have some departmental-level breakouts, and we can have a, a speaker who can address their common needs. And so it's, it's something we've never had before.
We have traditionally always had a certified staff PD plan, but we're trying to build towards having more professional development for support staff, so this is starting a budget line for that purpose.
Right.
And then the PD committee, they've talked about this a lot, the need for it and wanting to balance.
The rest of these items are smaller items, just some particular budget lines where the, the current budget just hasn't covered what the true expenses have been. the current budget just hasn't covered what the true expenses have been, so a couple of these, the maintenance and custodian uniforms and the football equipment reconditioning, we've really been just going over budget in those lines every year, and we need to beef that up a little bit. Athletic trainer services, we really didn't know how much, how the schedule was gonna work out, how many times we would need a separate trainer there for the high school versus middle school, so we need a little more money there. And then we're just building in a 2% increase in our utility costs.
Cindy, I...
Go ahead, Kim.
Just a general question about how the budget was developed, on the supply budget, are you kind of building from the ground up or starting with prior year? I guess what I'm asking is, last year we had a list like this, and I'm sure there were some one-time things, were those removed from this year, you know, this new budget?
Yeah, it's kind of a, it's kind of a combination of methods depending on the line, so like where they asked for the football equipment reconditioning, I kind of took a zero-based approach to that account and said, what are we spending this money on? And, you know, do we, how much more do we need there? That's kind of a small area. We don't do zero-based budgeting across the board, but just as things, everybody is taking the budget that they are allotted and kind of prioritizing on their own some things that need to be spent this year and some things that they'll wait till next year on, so I don't know if that really answered your question, but nobody's budget line ever really goes down, if that's what you're asking.
Well, it could in certain situations, but we didn't have that many one-time expenditures last year compared to what we're considering and looking at this year. That supply increase number wasn't as big, except for in the areas where we were significantly behind budgeting, like transportation and a few other places, if I recall.
Okay, and Carrie, yeah, that's what I was asking, actually both of you answered it, so I just wanted to make sure that we're not just continually adding on to the supply budget without taking out the one-time things that we had previously added, and it sounds like we're doing it right.
Off-subject question, but it made me think of it, have we replaced our SRO yet that left us?
We are actually working closely with the county, and the position was open through Peculiar because we had a contract to finish this year. We are filling that position just with our city patrolmen and staying on the radio and staying in the area for coverage, but in terms of an actual full-time warm body every day in that building, that's not always the case, it is sometimes. We're actually looking at building a partnership with Cass County Sheriff's Department, then we would end up with three SROs again, moving forward, we'd have one from Cass County, one from Peculiar, and one from Raymore, which would allow us to have a strong partnership with all three of those law enforcement agencies, but yes, our students are still being protected.
No, I didn't mean we weren't.
Yeah, no, it comes down to who can hire the right person, and so...
No, I like using all three.
Having the relationship with all of our local law enforcement agencies is gonna turn out to our favor. Kim, I'm just kind of looking back to last year at this time, we only had about $200,000 in our Priority One Supplies and Purchase Services, and half of that was for our technology plan integration, so we really didn't, none of it last year would have been considered one-time, so that was a good question, but we just were really lean last year in that regard.
And one other just kind of budgeting question, so some of these, if I look through, I wondered why they weren't on our capital expenditures, and is it just from dollar amounts, like the E-Rate purchases, those with infrastructure, is it just because the dollar amount's so low that it wouldn't be out of our capital budget?
I think every year, there's probably some things that at budget time, we don't really know what the dollar amount's gonna be and whether or not it's gonna qualify as a capital expenditure, but when it's equipment, well, the things that I know, I do put over in capital expenditures, like the Project Lead the Way classes that we're adding, some of that we know is capital equipment. On E-Rates, some of that possibly could be, but we would end up having to change our transfer, it's still gonna be an increase to the operating budget because we're probably gonna have to put additional money into capital projects somehow if we buy these things, even if they end up being capital projects expenditures.
To that point, yeah, to that point, at the end of the budget process, anything that we know is above our threshold, we'll move over there and just adjust our transfer accordingly, so it'll have the same impact on the bottom line.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Okay, so the Priority Two Supplies and Purchase Services, again, the first line is the supplies that will be required for the Priority Two and Three requested positions, and I think about $4,000 of that needs to move up to Priority One in our Supplies side for the positions that we pulled up. The next item is the fixed asset inventory, and this would be to have a contractor come in and do a district-wide building inventory count and implement a system for fixed asset inventory, and this isn't for our, like, I guess, our high-risk inventories. We do have inventory of all of our student devices, all of our library books, all of our textbooks, everything like that. We do actually have inventory records for our classrooms also, desks and chairs and everything like that. We don't have a single integrated system, and so we would have quite a job to do if we had a total loss of a building through fire or tornado or anything like that, and we had to put together a claim. So it's low priority because it's not a high-risk area, but it would be something that Dr. Petten Gill and I would really, really feel more comfortable in our jobs if we someday can implement something like this.
It's a good item, just probably a next-year thing.
Yeah. So Buildings and Grounds Electronic Rear Door Access, we just have a few rear doors in the district where we don't have the key card scanners installed yet. And then a technology, this is where we're leading into the next long-range technology plan, where Mr. Gooding has already submitted a 10-year classroom display refresh plan, classroom displays, talking about the projectors and...
Team boards.
And TVs, all that kind of thing.
That's part of the next cycle.
Yeah, next cycle.
We have been adding...
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Dr. Martin.
I was just gonna say, we have been adding for the last several years about $100,000 a year to the technology budget, and that has allowed us to get to our full integration now of devices throughout the district for students, so the next, if we're gonna build on that in the future, we're probably close to being able to maintain that level, but now we haven't addressed projectors, smart boards, TV, TVs, things of that sort, that we've got a lot of aged equipment throughout the district, so that's gonna probably be the next level of priority. Is that fair to say, Dr. Petten Gill? Okay.
So a question on the technology, I know, you know, we've seen a five-year technology plan, and I'm glad to see y'all being proactive here with, you know, adding in the projectors and whatnot, but what I can't remember, similar to our capital improvement long-term plan, does our technology plan, I mean, do we think it is comprehensive in this, does it include the infrastructure, or do we need to have a comprehensive five-year technology plan like our capital budget plan?
We have plans, Mr. Gooding has put together a plan for a process to make that a comprehensive five-year plan, multi-year plan, moving forward this fall as we put the bow ties on the current one, but that, we need to bring in stakeholders, we need to bring in our, you know, our experts in the classrooms, the ones that are putting their hands on this, be it teachers, some of our students, and get a lot of feedback, that's an entire process. You know, sometimes we would like to just sit down and write the plan that we think would be best, but we want to make sure that we're including all of our stakeholders in that plan to encompass the whole district and all of our patrons, so that's a plan moving forward, but we're aware that that's a need.
So we'll have that, we'll have that next year?
Yeah, that's a process for this fall, but the process has already started within our conversations, it's just as we start bringing in more stakeholders, that's a process we'll do this fall.
Sounds good.
So is there anything in Priority Two that the board would want to change?
You'll see those things next year.
Well, about the focus on safety, the electronic rear door access for $18,000 seems like, I mean, are there any other doors we need to do? I guess I was under the impression we already had all the doors taken care of.
I think as we've looked into this, and maybe Dr. Petten Gill would want to speak to this also, but we don't feel like it's a significant safety issue as much as it would just be more convenient.
What this comes down to is, I'm giving some hard keys to some delivering people. It would be a little bit cleaner if I could give them a fob, so that we'd have a stronger record of exactly when they came in and out, I mean, but it is on camera, I think it's more of a want than a need, I don't...
It's another example, though, too, of something, once the summer project budget is finalized and everything's bid out, there might be space available for us to revisit that, so it's another one of those things we can decide after we have some more information and be able to pull it up, and we've done that with some of those Category Two items before as well.
And it's scanned documented, like who used that fob?
Yeah, the fobs that we carry with us, we would just be adding some more of those controlled-access entry points on our rear entries, backdoors of kitchens, you know, and some of it's convenience, at East Middle School, a delivery comes, they have to ring a doorbell, wait for a staff member, a kitchen staff member or custodian to go back and check who it is, let them in, work with them, where if that was a fob door, we could give it, we could check out a fobbed key at a very nominal fee.
And the key fobs also, you can restrict times of access, right, whereas with a key you can't?
We can restrict exactly which door and what time they have access, yes.
I'd like to see that a priority, I mean, it's a shame to spend all this money on security and then we have this one exception to it.
Well, and the door's still locked, and, but...
So essentially, it's just convenience, and later down the road, you're looking at possibly...
This is obviously an area, this is obviously an area that, you know, with the $18,000 threshold, when our budgets, if budgets allow, it's an area that we would probably move forward with as money became available.
I agree, however, I mean, it's not just the convenience, I mean, someone who has a key can get in the building anytime, whereas someone with a key fob is restricted by time.
It's true.
Any other thoughts from the rest of the board?
So are you giving them to vendors or just...
Milk delivery, bread delivery, most of this, this, just as Cindy had pointed out with the additional budget request forms that built this list from all of our directors and our building leaders, the Supplies list also came from the same type of request. This request came from Sarah Chelberg in the Child Nutrition Department.
I guess that raises another question, are we doing background checks on the milk delivery people, I mean, do they have free rein and access to come in the building?
Yeah, all of our vendors are required to have background checks.
And the specific delivery people that are coming?
Correct. If they're on our campus, they have to have passed the federal background check and...
Okay.
You said this is something that we could look at in the summer, right?
Absolutely.
I like that idea of waiting.
That's the advantage of it being... I was just gonna say, that was kind of the advantage of it, a little bit lower price point, there's more flexibility to be able to pick some of those things up than if it was a $100,000 or $200,000 item, so there's a good chance we can do that.
Are you okay with that, Kim?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, moving along for you guys.
This next section can go fairly quickly, and that is, we talked about the new positions, we've talked about Supplies and Purchase Services, the other big pot of money then is how much we're allocating for our existing staff, so Brian's gonna very quickly kind of summarize what the Team RAPAC process has been so far.
Very good, and I want to say thank you to Ruth for your ongoing presence at that committee and your input, very helpful, and I'm glad to have you there. As you look at this piece of paper, I would like to point out that draft, I have draft written three times across the top, and I've also had March Scenario written across the top, this is not by any means a final recommendation from Team RAPAC, what this is, is we've been, well, first, let me back up, when Prop RP passed, that was a fantastic thing that our community supported the school district, made me proud to be part of this community and part of this school district, and that coming in April, the turnaround to expect Team RAPAC to then distribute that out in any type of equitable manner was asking a lot, and what they did honestly, and for a couple of different reasons, first of all, we were behind across the board, we knew that from our research in Prop RP, so Team RAPAC came out with a recommendation to give a flat blanket raises of the $1,500 to the teacher base and then corresponding percentage raises across the board, giving the steps, and that was, that way that our entire faculty, every staff member immediately had felt impact of, the impact of Prop RP passing, so that was a good thing. One of the things we did this year coming in, and one of the tasks assigned through the strategic planning, was to make, where we at market, you know, do a market comparability study, working with Dr. Hatfield, my administrative assistant, Casey, did a ton of work, we went in with every job description we have and compared it against our market, you know, our other schools in our market. Specifically, we tried to use the same schools we used in Prop RP, because that's who we were telling our, explaining to our public how we matched up with, so then that's the ones we then followed through with the study. Out of that study, and God bless the individuals on Team RAPAC, because not everybody loves the spreadsheets the way some of us do, but they were willing to dive into that and pull out and dredge through that data and really see exactly what areas, we, you know, I put the 20 schools in there, we ranked them, we put where our school district was, we calculated the median, then we did a gap analysis of where we compared to the gap, or compared to that median. Well, when you then turned around, we pulled out specifically, on the teacher's side, our teachers with a master's, early in our process, our newer teachers are pretty competitive. Our veteran teachers towards the end, once they get into the specialist and, you know, closer to the end of their 30 years, pretty competitive, we found out our teachers that they're just a master's degree, middle of the road, so columns I through, E through I, those master's levels, teachers where we lagged, kind of a competitive, a little bit low, competitive, so that allowed Team RAPAC then to say, okay, let's do some focused areas that we want to invest in. It also found out our RNs, we already knew our RNs and our LPNs were way underpaid to market value, they ended, that data then showed where we were at. There were several areas, so if you look at this list, you know, going through all the different prioritization exercises with Team RAPAC, they've done a hypothetical exercise if there was a $2 million pot, most recently, they did a hypothetical exercise to prioritize if there was a $2.2 million pot. So this is what they came up with, and this is a consensus, and this is me looking at it and doing an average, some groups gave more priority in one area and another, and I literally took a calculator and did an average and just said, hey, here's a possible scenario based off what they came up, again, this is not the recommendation from Team RAPAC, this is just a scenario to look at. So again, I think that top section of green, that's giving everyone their steps, one of the reasons we're able to do so much is because our staff has had a very healthy year, there is a 0% increase to our premiums outside of new FTE, which that's obviously, they don't give those away for free, to add FTE, but, so that's the 810,000, that's what it costs just to give everyone their steps, you know, their years of experience and then any additional education. The next two areas are the blanket raises, that's what everything was focused on last year, where they did a big raise, we looked, that is giving every teacher in the district, just adding to each cell, and it's by unit, so that they can piecemeal, go back and forth and argue among their tables, and then each tables argue out their sides, but that's, it's $70,000 to add $100 to each cell of the teacher's salary schedule. The current scenario, they did that 11 times for 770,000, adding $1,100 across the board in the current scenario to all cells with the teacher's salary schedule, then where that comes in, that $100, a $500 raise to the teacher's salary schedule is a 1% raise, so looking at doing a 1% raise down there on the classified, those are kind of tied together, those first two in that off-red, I don't like to use the word pink, but that off-red color, those are tied together, and I liked the fact that across the board, all six tables at Team RAPAC, if they gave, if they looked at, let's do another 1% to the teachers, and they said, let's do another 1% to the classified, so those were kind of tied together, as you'll see, they did both 11, they chose that, to do that 11 times 11 to get those numbers. The next one, this shows where they were able to pull out and look at one of our areas that was low against doing our gap analysis, was adding specifically $400 to the teachers with a master's degree, so those teachers would get the $1,100 plus an additional 400 because where they lagged behind their peers in other districts. The blue areas are some things that we work on every year. The blue areas are some things that we work on every year. Some of our staff is frozen, and if you're a master's degree and you've met every, all the requirements of your job, we hate to, and we want you to stay here for your full 30 years, if not longer, we hate to stop you from getting recognized for years of service at a certain year. So from the masters and beyond, which is part of our strategic plan, we wanted to continue to not freeze individuals there. So that's where that comes in. We currently allow 15 years of experience to be brought with you if you come from another school district and you want to come with us. As we look at our other peers in the metro, they are all working beyond that, to some that allow up to 30. Well, we're not going to just jump all of a sudden and let teachers come in, but we do want to add a year, and I'll let Lisa, you're looking, give me a look here.
Sure, I just, I was moving the microphone. I think just as we continue to anticipate a teacher shortage, and it's just, it's a known thing across the nation, we have to look for ways that we're going to be able to attract teachers to our district. This becomes important when you are, you're looking at experienced teachers that may have taught in another school district for 20 years, they're interested in RAPEC because they've heard great things about us, but when they look at the salary difference, we're only going to give them 15 years of credit. That begins to play in their decision-making process, especially as they get close to retirement. The other place that this will help us, and actually, about every year, we get one or two individuals from the Kansas side who is retiring after 25 or 30 years in Kansas and wants to continue working. So if we are honoring more of those years, we'll be able to attract them at a fairly low price tag. We'd like to, I think you'll see this next year, too, like, we will want 17, then 18, and so on.
No, ongoing, and as we mentioned earlier, I have a maintenance, a tech one position, which is more of a grounds and general maintenance position that's open. If I can find someone that's been working in a, for a SOD company for seven years and wants to come work here, it helps us, behooves us, to allow some more credit to be brought in on the classified side. Currently, that's five years, so as we allow an extra year of credit to be brought in for certified, we also are looking at that for the classified. And you want to do that one year at a time, so you don't start leapfrogging some of your current employees that didn't, that, we don't want to bring somebody in above them that had less experience, if that makes sense. This entire next area, all of the yellow highlighting, this are all of our areas, when we did all of those different spreadsheets and analyzed each of our jobs that we offer here, these are all the areas that were more than 6% behind the median. So Team RAPEC was able to, we were able to pull it out and say, these are the ones that are paid the most behind their market peers. So by utilizing our current salary schedule for those, we were able to look at moving them over a column, and moving a column as a 4% increase, it's a 2% increase for a credit for a year and a 4% increase to move a column. So we're reclassifying all of these positions over at least one column. An RN is on a different schedule than the LPN, the RNs on a professional support, so that is a large movement to do. That's like, that's a point two. Anyway, that's a large move to move the RNs over, so that's going to address them immediately by moving them one column.
Well, and for those newer on the board, this has been an area we've had a hard time keeping good nurses because they can make so much more, and, you know, ultimately, for them, it comes down to paying their bills just like everybody else. So we've lost some good people because of that.
And we'll never compete with the hospital setting for nurses, but there are those who want to be in the school setting, so we need to be able to compete with our peers.
And our RNs were much further behind market value than our LPNs, although our LPNs were also behind, and you'll notice so far, as of March, a consensus was to actually move them two columns to address the LPNs. And then further down, you'll notice they also looked at reclassifying our teaching assistants and focus room facilitators, two columns. That comes down, and that's also another area that we ran into on FEW. There's, not every job description has a nice, pretty equal in a Lee Summit or a Park Hill. The way we utilize our teaching assistants is totally different than some others, and we rely heavily on our, on our teaching assistants. From being married to an elementary teacher, I can tell you, they truly value their TAs.
Yes.
And they value all their support, but these TAs are God-sent in the, in the building.
Yeah, we believe this is an instructionally extremely important position, and I'm very happy to see that Team RAPEC agrees with that. Where they sit on the salary schedule absolutely equates to the quality of staff that we can bring in, and often, they are doing these interventions and they're supporting these teachers, and our kids didn't need the help, so I'd really like to see that.
So, and there's a ton of time and effort that went into looking at the internal equity. When we look at, once these moves are made, are we stepping on toes? Are we now paying a certain position more than another position? And I would ask for your trust in that Team RAPEC, and we are looking at that very closely. So I like the direction that the Team RAPEC has went. I trust the process, I think they're doing a great job. Once we, once Dr. Montes and Mrs. Baez go back and start crunching the numbers on the things that were moved around in here, that pot may get adjusted, he'll, they'll come back to Team RAPEC and give us a number to take another bite at it in April and get a recommendation compiled.
Just to clarify, then, so previously, they had started with the first draft of $2 million additional. We didn't know exactly where we were going to be, we had to start somewhere, and then this month, they went to 2.2, just to get another scenario, and so our next topic with you is going to be, what can we take back to them? So do you have any questions about this part of the information before we kind of go into the big picture again?
And I will echo what Dr. Petten Gill said. They have done really, really well about trying to make sure everybody is equitable in this process. You know, they, they see the need and the value of the RNs, of the TAs, of the focus facilitators, so they've really focused on everybody in general gaining in this process.
And typically, our certified staff have actually bumped our support staff a little extra because they know where the market is there. So, and typically, they've just gotten a little extra for the support staff because they felt like the need was there. So we appreciate that, respect for those positions. All right, any questions about the Team RAPEC sheet, just as an informational context? And again, they're, they're going to have another pass at this, obviously, as we meet the next time. So Michelle, if you will flip back to the pie chart, we have several other documents in here that we're not going to go through this evening unless you really want to, but they are supporting documents for our lease payments and our debt service payments and some of our allocations that we do, and there's, you know, we've included even the scorecards in case there was some specific program we wanted to look at. But we talked at the beginning...
I did have a, I did have a comment or question on the scorecards. Is this the time for that?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So, so this is, I guess, not necessarily a question for right now, but when we go, when I go through the scorecards, I try to look for, are the areas that have like a five and below, have we addressed them in the budget? And so, most of them we have, but there were a few that popped up that I wasn't sure how we had addressed them in the budget. So like, early learning, early childhood, had a low score, special education, had some low scores, and not just overall, but individual lines. Like, one of them, there's a number one on our math, right, scores, right? So I feel like we've addressed that.
Yes.
But could you all take a look through the scorecards and just make sure that anything that's a five or below, that we have some justification of how we have addressed it in the budget?
We'll be glad to do that. Some of those scorecards are built somewhat subjectively, so a five on one scorecard may not mean the same relative strength as a five on another, but the pattern is what we would look at and see, okay, collectively, obviously, math was an area that we're, we noticed a difference, and so we've talked about addressing that, obviously. So, but yeah, we can look at that holistically at the very least and try to get a sense of where we're at.
Thank you.
Okay, so going back to this larger piece of the puzzle, what I will tell you, Cindy and I have been over here doing some calculating here, just to kind of see where we think we're at with the additional positions you prioritize this evening. I think we are comfortable with what our initial projection for Team RAPEC would be of the 2.4 million. We're within 25,000 of that in the overall budget plan, if you will, when we look at that collectively. So I, we're comfortable, based on the feedback we've gotten so far tonight, to recommend going back to Team RAPEC with a $2.4 million, which, oh, by the way, was the amount we presented to them last year. So again, I'm kind of back to that, trying to do in two years what we had hoped to do in three, and I think they would appreciate that, and that'll speed up that market gap comparison that we've talked about, even at the last time we looked at our, our peer comparability data. So that, that's where I think we are in terms of this overall. They would love more, of course, as we all would, but I think that's a strong commitment by the board to invest significant resources in our staff. So I guess my question to you, with all these other assumptions per how we discussed tonight, knowing that between now and June, there will be some adjusting that has to happen as we get more information, I'm confident enough now in the overall picture to take that amount to Team RAPEC if the board is so inclined to do so.
Just in general, do we feel like...
Dr. Montes?
Go ahead.
Does that still leave us flexibility with our continued planning and improvements when it comes to mental health? Or are we eating up all of our flexibility to do more in that area next year?
Okay, so in those future-year projections, we show an average total increase in salaries of about 4% a year. Some of that would be existing staff, some of that would be new staff, it kind of depends on how we prioritize that. Our steps, on average, are about 2%, so that's what it takes just to fund our schedules moving forward. So anything above and beyond that, we would have the flexibility to either add to existing staff or add to new positions. So we've, we've used some pretty conservative estimates moving forward. So the answer to your question, I think, is yes, but we'll kind of have a little, we'll have to go through that prioritization process with any other needs that would be out there, too. To say right now that this amount would be dedicated to mental health or any other initiative or effort, technology or anything like that, we haven't defined it that way at this point. So there'd be flexibility, maybe not as much as we've had the last two years, but certainly there'd be some flexibility there.
And then just to clarify, and maybe we've already said it, but with the proposed salary and, you know, structure, does that, by the end of next year, when we implement this, if we implement this, does that put us where we promised we would be and we have then met our commitments that we made during Prop RP? Or is there more we need to do next year to have met our commitments?
We would have invested the amount we said we were going to into existing staff salaries. As far as closing the market gap, it will close the market gap. It will not completely eradicate the market gap we never really envisioned. We're still in the bottom third of the metro in total tax rate. So we will be, I think, at the end of the process, comparable to where our tax rate is. So we'll have closed the gap significantly. We probably, I'm hoping we'll be at least in the upper half by the time we get done with this, compared to being in the bottom, very bottom quartile, if you will, that we are right now, or where we started at. And again, it's going to take a couple of years for this to show up in our average salary comparisons like we talked about at a previous meeting, and there's a, there's a time lag with all that, so. But yes, we will have committed, yeah, we will have committed the amount in the existing staff salaries that we had talked about during the campaign.
Just in general, in supplies and services, are we, with our enhanced Project Lead the Way and stuff, are we giving them what they need? Or are we, are we truly giving them enough to do what they're doing?
Yes, and I was very appreciative of that tonight, because that was something we just discussed internally. We knew those were a big ask and those were big numbers. We think they're very beneficial to students, but yes, I believe we are giving them what they need.
And have we still addressed, like, at the high school level, the culinary program, the IV program, all those programs we were slowly implementing as we could do it? Have we addressed all of those?
I think our growth, our continual professional development, our student enrollment, all those things are showing that we are addressing, and those programs are flourishing.
Any other feedback for us as we kind of continue down this path? I think we've got a sense of direction on some additional staffing positions, and what will happen next is that at our next board meeting, Leece will bring you a memo with all the staffing positions we've outlined this evening for your approval, then we post them and start filling them, and then likewise, we'll take a $2.4 million number to Team RAPEC to finish their prioritization process. That will come back to you at the, at the April meeting.
Just a board reminder, tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, Congresswoman Hartzler will be here, so if you guys could be here in the morning in the boardroom about 9 o'clock, that would be great. Anything else? We're adjourned. Thank you, guys, for calling in.